Like to call this the meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, August 20th to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Branstutter,
Councilmember Moss, Deputy Mayor Whalen, Mayor Anderson,
and Councilmember Simpson has been excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute. We want to do the business showcase. We now move to proclamations and presentations. We are featuring the VIP Barber Shop with Ms. Sun Williams, the owner. Please join Deputy Mayor Whalen at the podium.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you. In most barber shops, I'm known as a cheap date because I don't have much to cut. But a VIP barber, when you walk through the door, you're more than a paying customer of your family. Sun Williams opened her business 10 years ago in Lakewood. In that time, she relied on word of mouth to build her client base, and her reputation extends beyond the South Sound. Online reviews show customers willing to travel as far away as Kirkland for the $12 haircut. Williams sees each client, whether a doctor, plumber, or active-duty military, as a chance to build a relationship and learn from each other. She recently relocated her barber shop to a new location at 3615 Silicon Boulevard. She's now spreading the word that VIP Barber is again open for business. It's because of Williams' dedication to treating each customer as a VIP, and because of her longevity in the community that the Lakewood City Council recognizes VIP Barber as its August 2018 business showcase. And we are very proud of you and proud to have you as a great business member in our community. And because of this, we create this wonderful opportunity to showcase your business and to give you a chance to say a few words. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we'll get a quick picture here. Want to say a little bit of history about your business? I know that Becky said all sorts of good things about you, and she brought you in, and all the wonderful things that you're doing. Yeah, Ms. Newton?
I have to work.
It's up to you if you want to say a couple of little things, or just come get a haircut.
Oh, I like to express a lot of things, but English is my second language, so I'm going to make a preference possible. Moving to a new location, I had to experience a lot of difficulties and unusual circumstance caused me a lot of anxiety and pressure. But I got great help from our workers of the city of Lakewood that are neighbors and then friends. They were really surprised with that great help, gave me encouragement and strength to go on. So using this opportunity, I just want to express that I thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Would you join us down in front for a picture here, please? We now move to public comment. This is the section of the agenda when any member of the public may speak to any item of interest to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on in a 30-second warning. The red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and place of residence, such as Paul Volkey, Lakewood, Washington. The first person who signed up is Mr. Dennis Howgan.
Dennis Howgan, Lakewood, Washington. Mostly comments I have is about the last meeting. Front page there, when I, my history of growing up in a small town is I got a good dose of history. And probably the tens of thousands of little small towns have these every five-year, 10-year parades, of which then thousands of people come back, even though they aren't on the farm anymore, maybe two generations, and learn about how it was settled, and the difficulties of saddling, the many decades of hardship to get, to get the farm producing the way they do today. The other thing I noticed on here is you're going to spend $25,000 on this workshop. Probably need to spend it on a detoxification workshop. In 2006, look at your second page, 2006, I took pictures of the food they were feeding the kids in the, at Park Side, and then at Clover Park. I got many more photographs. Junk food everywhere. Then I went back in 2008 to Idlewild. They did have a little fuss, and they did make a little fuss, and they tried to improve, I guess, but went back in in 2008, feeding cookies for breakfast, you know, at Idlewild. So it told me that it's useless, because number one, you as elected officials don't have any control. Read the last page, the NEA, take it from the attorney. Said it's about power, not about education. You can't fire a teacher if they don't do, if they don't produce to a certain level. You're useless as elected officials. Now, I happen to go to one of those little country schools that tens of thousands of people went to. In those days, the teacher confronted the parents, and the parents could get a teacher fired if they didn't produce. And out there on, there's a new gal now on the scene, Candace, Candace Snowden, black gal, sharp, has risen to the scene, and she's going to be addressing these issues far better than I can over the next few meetings.
Thank you. The next person who signed up, I apologize, is either Dan or Don Reynoldson. Don?
I am Don Reynoldson, and I have lived in Lakewood my entire life. My folks' homestead began in 1967. We live on Angle Lane. We're off of 100th Street Court, southwest and Angle Lane, and the speed limit on Angle Lane is too much. It's 25 miles an hour, but honestly, I don't think anybody goes that. Back when I was a kid, a little girl was hit off of her bicycle riding on Angle Lane. I don't remember what the outcome was. I was young. But just the other day, a car was going the speed limit, and the car behind them swerved around them to get fast, to go faster. So they passed them. I have grandchildren that are in that yard every day, and I don't want to see an accident. So my question is, I don't, I'm not here to propose anything, other than I, I'm not privy to speed bumps. That's not going to solve anything, but because a lot of people are. So I'd like to know what will be done about all the speeders on that road. I mean, it leads right into the park, you know, and it's a residential street. So I'm opening it up to you for some comment and ideas.
Well, our public comment session is to listen. We don't have a give-and-take interrogatory, but we are aware of the issue, and staff's looking into it.
Okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next person who signed up is Chelsea Becker.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Chelsea Becker. I live in Tacoma, Washington. However, I was the store manager over here at the Target in the Lakewood Town Center. I've provided a letter for your review at a later time. As I understand, I only have three minutes. On March 31st, somebody made an attempt on my life as I walked to my vehicle after work. After waiting for over an hour, a man got out of a truck and shot a gun at me. After reviewing Target's surveillance and the actions of the shooter, it appears to be a disgruntled employee shooting at me, the store manager, at that location. On April 3rd, I met my, with my detective for the first time. He asked me for a list of any employee that was terminated or had a performance issue that they were counseled on. I provided him the list of which he asked, but highlighted employees that I felt more likely to target me. I specifically told my detective there was a person on the list that I felt was a primary suspect, and that my district manager and my HR manager felt the same to be true. I also asked on April 3rd if we could get the case to Crime Stoppers, as I wanted this solved as quickly as possible so I could get back to work. My detective shared they could not go to Crime Stoppers until all suspects were interviewed, but they would do it once they were complete on their end. Over the next two months after that April 3rd meeting, I had a few discussions over the phone with my detective. Please reference the letter I provided for details around two interviews that were completed. I feel there were some red flags raised that were never revisited, one of which the detective shared with me was a red flag. On June 6th, I emailed my detective and asked how interviews were going and the status of going to Crime Stoppers, as I had still not returned to work. He responded and said that because my list seemed to be endless, he wasn't done, but should be done within the week. I felt it was inconsiderate of him to refer to my list in this way, as he had specifically asked me for all the terminations and performance issues. Because of the length of the list, I had shared with him who I felt was more cause for concern than others. It made me feel as though my detective is dealing with time constraints, as he had previously shared with me he is working 130 cases. After that contact on June 6th, and him telling me he would be done within the week, and it could go to Crime Stoppers, I never heard anything. So on June 27th, I sent an email to the police chief, Sergeant Rich Hall, and my detective outlining my concerns with the urgency, concerns in the interview details, and impact this has had on my life as a victim, given some of the statements that were made to me. Not a single person responded to my email. This made me feel as if I do not matter as a citizen working in Lakewood, and that because I wasn't actually hit by the bullet, my case doesn't matter. This has had a huge impact on my life and my personal safety. This person at large is also a danger to society, and Lakewood PD has not exhausted all avenues to try and get any answers. As I never heard back from LPD, on July 18th, I reached out to Brianna Shoemaker. She followed up with LPD at that time, and on August 2nd, I still had not heard anything. So I contacted Brianna again, and she told me she had reached out to Sergeant Rich Hall, and he would follow up. Fast forward to today, I haven't heard from LPD, and we are approaching five months after the crime. And to my knowledge, I'm unsure if all interviews are done. So essentially, I have a call to action. One, it's to get it to Crime Stoppers to generate tips. Two, more compassion for victims. Three, urgency and follow-up in interviews and the concerns that arise in interviews. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. That's all the people who have signed up. If anyone wishes to make public comment, they aren't foreclosed by lack of signing up, please step up the podium now. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Hearing none, declare public comment closed. Now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council's special meeting of July 30th, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council's study session of August 6, 2018. C, motion number 2018-40, appointing 2018 to 2019 youth council members. D, motion number 2018-41, appointing Michael Arnett to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August 6, 2021. E, motion number 2018-42, authorizing the execution of a contract with Beechers Foundation in the amount of $25,000 to provide a variety of nutrition workshops for the Lakewood community. F, motion number 2018-43, amending financial policies. G, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of June 6, 2018. Two, Planning Commission meeting minutes of July 18, 2018. And three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of August 1, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any member wants removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion. It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? While in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. The first item is public hearings and appeals.
This is the date set for a public hearing on vacating a portion of unopened right-of-way adjacent to 7703 59th Ave. West.
Do we have a sign-up sheet for testimony? Under here? Thank you. Mr. Bucic.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Wallen, members of the City Council. Flood Creek LLC has submitted a request to vacate a portion of the alley right-of-way adjacent to the property owned at 7703 59th Avenue West. The unopened alleyway, as you can see in the graphic that's presented to the public, as well as on your screen, bounded by 77th Street West, on one end, 59th Avenue West and Burgess Street. It currently is unopened. As you can see from the graphic, we're looking at approximately a 20-foot by 100-foot dimension for the alleyway requested for the vacation. Flood Creek LLC proposes to incorporate this approximately 2,000-square-foot section of right-of-way into their property. They plan to redevelop the property into a 10-unit apartment complex, and the property was previously listed as, or used as, a hair salon. The applicant, in accordance with our code, has submitted an appraisal that values the proposed land at $18,000, or about $9 a square foot. We've reviewed their methodology and the results of the appraisal, and we concur with it. On July 2nd, the City Council passed Resolution Number 2018-08, setting tonight for a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Tacoma New Tribune. A placard was posted on the site. Mailers were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the proposed vacation area, along with contact with all the local utility companies. To date, staff have not received any objections to the proposed vacation, and the recommended conditions of the vacation are listed in the staff report, which is in your packet. Staff are recommending that we proceed with the public hearing tonight, take comments from the public, and barring any controversy or any counterproposal to the vacation, that we be directed to prepare ordinance for City Council consideration on the next council meeting, which is September 4th, that actually will proceed with and vacate the property. With that, I'm prepared to help answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Bucic? Mr. Whalen?
Mr. Bucic, is it unusual where you've got a partial vacation like this, that other neighbors don't call up and say, gee, me too, or is it fairly common? This is kind of a funky one.
I think it's, it depends on if others have also been using the right-of-way. May advance to the next picture if I can.
This one also, if I look down below, go back just a sec if you would.
Yes, sir.
It looks like to the south, there are two buildings that seem to be encroaching into the right-of-way significantly.
Surprisingly enough, yes, there are. And this is not an uncommon occurrence in an unopened right-of-way where the adjoining neighbors start to take advantage of it and use the public property for their own purposes.
Go ahead and go to the next one.
All right. The next slide is just very simple. This is a, going back.
Was ownership of the shed that's in the, the right-of-way determined?
We have not investigated who owns the shed, but I'm pretty confident it would be in the property immediately. As I'm looking at the screen to the left, I believe that's 7711 and 7713. Someone in that vicinity owns it. The question is, on an unapproved right-of-way, do we spend the time and the effort to go in there and require someone to remove a building like this, if it's, if it's not harming anything, or do we require them to come in for a street vacation? One of the issues that we're undertaking right now is an investigation into unopened right-of-ways, alleyways, and partial streets that are, that are remnants, like Klein Street, that has been a problem for us. We're trying to amass a listing of that to figure out, what do we do with this, and then intend on bringing a plan to the City Council here in the next few months that may involve leaving it as is, talking to the property owner to see if they want to pursue a vacation, or in some cases, just vacating it through council action and getting it off the books.
Do we know when this was platted?
It's in the, in the records here. It has been quite some time.
Because if I recall from a prior life, there's a magic date, and if it was a plat, a plat that occurred before a certain date, and the county never improved it, that it doesn't need to be vacated, quieted. Titleist needs to be quieted. I forget what that magic date is, but it's like 100 years ago. Yeah, but.
I'm sorry. I actually couldn't hear you.
There's a magic date in, in, say, it's more than, more than 100 years ago, where if something was platted before that date, and the county never improved the right-of-way, that vacation isn't proper. It's because the title has vested in the adjoining property owners by default.
I forget what that magic date is. I'm not familiar with that. All I know is that the one that gives most jurisdictions the problem is the Ballenger Act. That was from quite some time ago, and I'd rather not get into the details of that, because I'm a little fuzzy on it. It's about 15, 20 years since I've dealt with that. I know it's a real thorny issue and a problem. I will tell you is that prior to moving forward to council, we do investigation to find out whether, how the land came to be right-of-way, because if it was a dedication to the jurisdiction for a right-of-way, that basically resulted in basically being an easement, when we no longer needed the right-of-way, it goes back to the adjoining property owner who, or owners who gave it to us for the use of a right-of-way. In some cases, it's really hard. In fact, we have one of those situations right now. We're trying to ascertain who actually owns it. Do we own it, or do the underlying property owners own it? In this particular case, because of the plating process that went through, it was dedicated as a alleyway to the jurisdiction of that kind, Pierce County.
Please answer my question.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick one. Is it the property 7703 that's the applicant?
7703 is the property that is requesting vacation.
Yep, got it. That makes sense, then. Because I was thinking if it was the property to the right, they might want obviously a little bit more.
Just as a side note, if you look at this, you'll notice on the difference in suing Just as a side note, if you look at this, you'll notice on the different ensuing blocks around it, that the alleyways, in some cases, have been totally vacated. There's nothing left. If you look to the upper part of the picture, if you look to the right and to the left, the vacations that occurred in the past have left this slim remnant that really has little to no value to us whatsoever. And the problem with those particular tracks like that is people use them for dumping sometimes, and then they call us because it's on public property, so we have to go out there and clean it up. And of late, when requests have been coming in from like a half a street vacation where dead ends on I-5, the answer has been no, we're not going to give another half a street and deal with the Klein Street. We'll work with all the property owners if we're going to vacate it, and vacate it en masse, and just get it off of our records. We don't have to deal with it anymore. As a little bit of a side note, well, not pertinent to this particular vacation, but I wanted you to know that.
Any further questions from council? Well, thank you. So now's the opportunity to take public testimony regarding the vacation of a portion of unopened right-of-way adjacent to 7703-59th Ave. The rules for, this testimony is similar to the rules for the public comment in that you are limited to three minutes per person. Yellow light coming on at 30 seconds is a warning. Red light when the time is up. However, in this case, the subject matter is limited to the subject of the vacation. We don't have anyone who's signed up who's indicated they wish to testify. That does not preclude you from testifying. Is there anyone present who wishes to testify concerning the vacation of a portion of unopened right-of-way adjacent to 7703-59th Ave? If there's anyone who wishes to testify, please step forward now. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to resolutions. Resolution Number 2018-10, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What you have in front of you is an item that was discussed at last week's study session, which would be a resolution ratifying several proposed amendments to the countywide planning policies. These have been reviewed previously through the Growth Management Coordinating Committee and the Pierce County Regional Council, and also approved and recommended for ratification by the Pierce County Council to all of the jurisdictions in Pierce County. The resolution deals with two topics, one of which is referred to as dry sewers. And in the past, there has been a policy in place through the countywide planning policies requiring jurisdictions to put in sewers prior to their actual use, so they may run to a project that is handled currently through septic systems. And then the other topic is related to what's been termed UGA banking, or urban growth area banking. And that is an opportunity, if the change in policy goes through through ratification, to allow jurisdictions who wish to reduce their urban growth boundary, for whatever reason, to put that into a, quote, "bank" for other jurisdictions within Pierce County who are looking to perhaps expand theirs. And that would be something that would be worked through the PCRC negotiation process. So you spoke about this amongst yourselves last week at the study session. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Any questions for Ms. Spear, Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, on the urban growth area banking, I guess my question is, what's the currency? Is it acres? You submit a certain number of acres, and you get some acres back. Is it assessed valuation? When you, when they go through this process, if someone gives up 30 acres of swamp, what does that mean that someone else can acquire?
And that answer has not been developed yet, because this is directing the PCRC to develop the criteria. Historically speaking, though, the way development rights have been used through the Transfer of Development Rights program is depending on the type of land and what kind of yield you can get out of it for development, it has different value. So for instance, an area with a lot of environmental constraints would have a lower number of density credits that could be traded around, and perhaps this program will happen the same way. But that's not been set yet. PCRC is going to do that.
Okay. And then on the dry sewers issue, in your comments, you mentioned municipalities putting in sewers. But did that, is that, in the past, has this actually applied to developers who are like developing subdivisions, but that weren't within an area where sewer line reached them, that they had to put in a dry sewer? And if they did so today, they would have to do that?
Yeah. I should have been clearer in my explanation. What has happened in the past is rather than, for instance, the Pierce County Sewer Utility to proactively plan for and extend sewer lines out toward areas that have yet to be developed, or taking them to areas that are developed within a city or within the unincorporated area, the developer, as they propose a project, are being asked to do this extension of sewer lines. And then once a septic system, for instance, then becomes within 300 or 1,000 feet, depending on different situations of that new sewer main, they may be required to connect. But what has happened more often than not is these sewer lines get put in place, and they're not accessed for such a long time that there becomes a problem of capacity and/or integrity of the line. There's a lot of, time goes by, and it begins to break down, or have infiltration through root systems, so they become useless. And so the discussion has been about updating this and allowing jurisdictions to change the policy to allow for options besides doing the dry sewer line as currently required.
So if this became a Pierce County planning policy, then are there city of Lakewood policies that would have to be, or could be, adjusted? This doesn't mandatorily direct a city to change its policies, but it gives a city the option?
Correct.
So would we anticipate doing that, given that we have some parcels in the eastern parts of Woodbrook and some things there, where if somebody went in and decided to build some things that sewer lines don't reach yet? Have staff thought about how we would take advantage of this policy change, or is it kind of mute with us?
I think it's mute. I think, in essence, the city is more interested in pursuing a position that the sewer utility proactively build these lines and take areas within the city of Lakewood that are currently handled through septic systems and mandate connection. But doing that on the backs of the sewer utility directly, rather than having the city having to either take funds and then turn around and build the system, it's talking directly to the utility to build the system instead. So this is a slightly different twist on the issue of sewers. I don't think Lakewood, at this point, has talked yet about this, either internally or at the elected level.
How, when dry sewer lines were put in, and, you know, just saying they were put in by, and were turned over to the, were they typically turned over to the sewer utility?
Yes.
Or, so, for instance, in Partridge Glen, which is an area that might, it's in our UGA, but might or might not ever be annexed to us. But there are a lot of dry sewer lines under those streets when that was developed. That, is there anything in this policy that will cause the Pierce County Sewer Utility to inventory its dry sewer lines and develop some sort of a plan to make them functional?
This policy, no. But at the moment, they are in the middle of developing an update to their unified sewer plan. And I know Lakewood's going to be engaged as a stakeholder when they get going on that this fall. And that will be the opportunity to provide input and engage and advocate for, if you will, a more active sewer utility, taking some more preemptive strikes, if you will, at this issue, rather than just sitting back and letting private development try to handle
So if there is a dry sewer line, and near, in front of your property, and your septic system fails, you're not under an obligation to actually hook up to a dry sewer line?
That gets into Department of Health issues, and I couldn't give you a very clear answer. Very vague answer for you this evening, sir, would be, the idea is, yes, if you have a failing septic system, either for an individual property or for a neighborhood, or a mobile home park, or whatever it is, once there becomes a health safety issue, mandatory hookup is kind of the next step. Whether it's to a dry sewer line, or whether you pull a new line to it, is another question. The first question to answer is, taking a look at the dry sewer, is it even usable, depending on when it was installed? Those sorts of questions would have to be answered first.
And those would be primarily answered by the Health Department and the sewer utility?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
So maybe we have a definitional issue here. I thought that the dry sewer lines were things like in Partridge Glen that aren't hooked up to anything.
Dry sewer lines are at some point hooked into the main system. But when they are extended out, they may or may not be hooked up to anything right-of-way. At the, they, at some point in theory, could be hooked into the active sewer system. They're there in the ground. The development at the far end may or may not be using them. You may have a long stretch where the main goes to a specific development, it hooks into sewer, but all along here, there may be stubs out that are dry sewers to presumed future development. And so they may or may not ever have been used.
Well, yeah. Our current regulations applied to that would mean that people within a certain number of feet would be required to hook up.
Yeah. Yeah. There are rules about that, and then there's this question of the dry sewer. You have to install it regardless of whether there's anybody within a certain distance.
So to Mr. Branstadter's question, if somebody's adjacent to a dry sewer line that's theoretically functional and their septic fails, they'd have to, they'd have to hook up by our regulation, not just by county.
Yeah, assuming the dry sewer is working, or something. It would have to get repaired, or what have you. Yeah.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to address the other issue here, the UGA banking, which I've expressed my trepidation about. But I, without going into all that, I would note that at the PCRC meeting last Thursday night, the county executive, Mr. Danmeyer, mentioned that he was, that I think they were, the county is okay with this, but his concern on this was that it would go in the bank but never come out, that as soon as someone shrank the UGA, because Pierce County in general has too large of a UGA, that's a general belief, I guess, at the PSRC level, that if something went into the bank, it would never be allowed out, that as soon as someone said, well, we'd like to expand our UGA, the PSRC will just be like, no way, no how. So he was talking that it would almost have to be a simultaneous transaction, that nothing could go in until we knew it was going to come out. Otherwise, we would just, over time, just be shrinking our UGA. So I want, I want the members to know that that, because that isn't addressed in this, right? We're just asking the PCRC to come up with a policy on UGA banking.
Yes, and apologies if this gets a little too wonky for the response here, Mr. Bulkey, but you have the contiguous urban growth area, which is the big one, in the middle of the county. And there are unincorporated areas, and then there's UGAs associated with specific cities within that. So Puyallup, for instance, has an urban growth area, and it's adjacent to, but separate from now, because it's ID'd as a Puyallup urban growth area from the county's urban growth area, right? So you could have Puyallup reducing its UGA without Pierce County's big one getting reduced.
Okay.
And then you would have city and city trading off. I'm assuming that there would be a great deal of reluctance, not only by PSRC, but by cities within the county, to do things that would change the size any bigger to the county's UGA. I'm assuming this process is going to move forward to be a city-to-city transaction.
Where there's an agreement between two parties to do that. Yeah, I, that's probably the only way it's probably going to work.
Yep.
Do you think it's going to be infrequent?
I'm sorry?
Do you think it's going to be an infrequent occasion?
I think it will be infrequent, yes.
Well, I mean, I don't know that how many cities, having sat at the PCRC, I kind of get the feeling that the whole thing is being done for the benefit of Buckley on one side, and two or three other cities, Gig Harbor, who's fighting growth, you know, really, really, I mean, to the point they have a moratorium. They want to get rid of a large area. Buckley wants commercial. And I think at one meeting I was at, Edgewood and Milton, we're like, take some of ours too, because we don't want growth either. So, you know, I think it's smaller cities that either don't want growth, or want what they perceive as commercial growth. And so I think Buckley may be entering into this with the idea that we can have commercial growth, but nobody's going to ask us to take more people if we take more UGA. And I don't know that that's maybe not a naive assumption, but Buckley does pretty well in front of the PCRC, so.
Anything further? Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just really wanted to ask Mr. Bulkey and the deputy mayor, their opinions about whether is this policy sufficiently developed to be able to come to any sort of predictable outcome in the PCRC, to the point that we should support it? Or should we not support it so that some of the, you know, a greater level of detail is clear as to what would happen? Based on Mr. Bulkey's comments, I'd be concerned that if some city gave up property that was a part of the growth, population growth equation, and another city acquired property that wasn't going to be a part of the growth equation, but the total amount of growth that the county had to have with that, with other cities not involved, such as Lakewood, then be apportioned a bit more growth?
So here's perhaps my uneducated take on this. I don't think this does anything one way or the other for Lakewood. That's my humble opinion. These come up, and as a result of the rules of PCRC, they have to go out and either be approved or disapproved by the member jurisdictions. And if it doesn't, you know, no one acts on it, then I think it dies after a certain number of days following the county's passage, right?
Actually, the way the process works now is if a jurisdiction does not take any action, it's deemed to have approved it.
Approved, that's right, yeah. So if we don't take action, it's deemed to be approved. If we take action and we don't approve it, then that impacts the number of jurisdictions that get a requisite vote. So my thought is, it doesn't impact us negatively, and likely wouldn't, and I don't know if it would impact us positively. This is one of those things where I don't see the downside to us supporting it, because there are going to be opportunities where Lakewood wants something. And sometimes it's, you know, go along to get along a bit. And so there will be issues where, for example, we want the military centers push pretty hard for JBLM, that we may need a couple of these little jurisdictions to sign on with this. So it's a little give and take. I don't think it hurts us.
I, I think we should have gotten those things that the deputy mayor is saying in this. I, I, I actually think that the, because of the turnover at the small cities, or in any city, well, first of all, I don't know that Buckley sees this as quid pro quo at any point in time. And, or Gig Harbor, for that matter. And we should have probably gotten those things in this, rather than, and I think that there are, I guess my concern is the unintended consequences, you know, what happens? What do we not know that can occur in this swap system?
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just thinking for the future. This is totally out of my league, so I'll admit that upfront. But if there's something that we can do now to prevent something happening in the future, should we do something with our policy at this point? And I'm thinking in terms of the high-speed rail, how something failed years ago that wasn't paid attention to, that could have been prevented us from being... wasn't paid attention to, that could have been prevented us from being in the condition that we are in today. So I'm just thinking out loud, can we do something now to prevent further down the road?
Yeah, I agree with one of the earlier comments, that I don't know what the impact of this directly on Lakewood would be. I mean, I can see the jurisdictions mentioned having a particular interest, that we wouldn't be involved in any of their transactions. I can't see any small city wanting to take on additional UGA to build homes because they already don't have the tax base to provide city services, and the economies of scale are upside down when you start providing residential services without any commercial. So I think we do, this is kind of, I rarely say this, this is a go-along-to-get-along. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt resolution number 2018-10. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. When the motion carries, we now move to resolution number 2018-11.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Tiffany Spear, Planning Manager, Special Projects, and this is also something that was discussed at last week's study session. This is more of a proactive action by the City of Lakewood to take three potential work plan items for the 2019 PCRC work plan to consideration by the PCRC this fall. The first is to, again, talking about sewer, I'll just read straight out of the memo, which is on page 59 of your packet this evening, "Developing Policy Direction for Consideration and Action to Update the Pierce County Sewer Utilities' Capital Facility Practices to Construct Sewer Lines Into Existing Incorporated Areas Currently Served by Septic Systems." So this is an attempt to nudge, poke the sewer utility into operating more like a business. I believe this is something the council has had conversations about over time with the city manager, and so this was an opportunity to bring it forward now, so when the General Assembly for PCRC occurs next February, hopefully it would be included in the work plan for next year. The second policy on the following page, "Develop Policy Direction for Pierce County and Its Cities and Towns for Inclusion in the Countywide Planning Policies, Comprehensive Plans, and Other Appropriate Documents That Provides Individual Jurisdictions the Ability to Adjust Population and Employment Targets Based on Situations or Issues Outside of Their Ability to Govern." So this is simply trying to put a little bit of reality on that whole process of population and employment allocation, which occurs periodically. Office of Financial Management comes up with a countywide number, it goes to the Pierce County Council and all of the city's, staff and elected-level conversations occur. Ultimately, there is an allocation of both housing units and jobs to the various cities within Pierce County as well as the county itself, and then it's approved by Pierce County. What that doesn't do at this point is do things like recognize for the City of Lakewood, population goes up and down regardless, just due to what happens on the base, for instance. There's some environmental constraints in certain areas of the City of Lakewood where there's just never going to be the densification that would be needed in order to reach some of these population projections. So Lakewood isn't unique in having these unique situations, and so the idea is that have PCRC take this up and come up with some new policies that provide for a way for a city to explain why whatever number is assigned to them may or may not make sense over time. The third policy on page 60, "Consider the Formation of a New Metropolitan Planning Organization and Regional Transportation Planning Organization for Pierce County and Its Cities and Towns." This is a follow-up to what City of Lakewood commissioned last year. I believe it was Burke and Associates provided the Regional Planning Organization Options Report that was published last May, and this is just simply, again, an opportunity to take it back to the PCRC for further consideration and potential action. There were quite a few turnovers, politically speaking, in last fall's election, so a number of the members of PCRC have probably never seen the report that Lakewood commissioned or had part in any of the conversations last year about it when it went to them. So the idea is to reintroduce this idea, talk about it as a group next year, and see if there's any impetus or a willingness to consider moving that idea forward. So the resolution would take all three of these things forward as something to request the PCRC to take up next year.
Questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Whalen.
There you go, there you go. Now that we've got communication under control.
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with the first two policies. But as a pragmatist, here's my question to you with regard to policy number three. I'll ask you a little question about predictive analytics.
Okay.
Snowball, hell, what's the chance that this would get past the City of Tacoma and/or Pierce County?
I would assume that the Pierce County snowball would happen and survive in hell faster than the Tacoma snowball.
What happens without Tacoma?
Yeah, it doesn't happen without Tacoma. There has been political change and staff change to some extent in the city, so I don't know if that would affect the conversation going forward into next year, but at this point, City of Tacoma probably would not be supportive. That's what I would predict.
I have no problem pushing, you know, putting our stamp on these policy considerations, but I just want people to be realistic about, I'm really hesitant of investing too much of our city's staff time on this policy, objective number three, because I think it's pushing a large ball uphill with limited return.
Well, I'd join in that concern that we don't spend a lot of staff time developing a concrete plan, because we also have the governor's office to deal with, and this governor would not, wouldn't approve it. However, we have, giving it lip service and advancing it, I think has a benefit in that those new people haven't seen Don Quixote charge the windmill, and keeping that alive has some benefit, because I think there's a point where Pierce County is going to tip if the Puget Sound Regional Council doesn't change its ways, and Kitsap may be in the same boat. So it's going to take a change at the governor's office and some migration by Tacoma, I think it's going to be a natural evolution at the county level, and so keeping the issue out there is helpful. Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The sewer one, I'm supportive of it, but I kind of want to understand, so this is a case in, like, Tillicum, where we put in the trunk lines or we put in the major lines, and now we got to get down all these other streets and down towards the lake. Is that what you'd anticipate under this policy, if the county was to change that, we would somehow tell the sewer department? And how would we make, maybe I'm asking too much, but how would we make this a priority for them?
Right, and I don't know that this would evolve into the ability of a city to say, "Okay, sewer utility, this is what you do next." I think it's more of a conversation toward, again, that idea of the Unified Sewer Plan being updated and maybe some executive level to that department's policies, saying you will be more proactive in your planning. It used to be, and I think to some extent this is still true for both sewer and roads in the county, it was simply, "We as a county don't do this stuff, the private development side does," end of story. And so this is requesting that, and in particular, cities like University Place as well as Lakewood, where there are areas that were formerly an incorporated county, still operate on septic, and now sewer lines have gone beyond those areas, but the county utility never came through and filled in the gap. So trying to encourage, require, whatever it turns into, the sewer utility to come back and fill in those areas would be the first priority, I think.
So Ms. Spear, in your, I think you've looked at this issue in past lives, too. In your experience in urban counties, or let's just say Western Washington, what do these sewer utilities usually do?
Well, the...
Is it the pay-as-you-go system that Pierce County has, or do most of them use a, "We'll try to keep up with growth"?
It's probably more so the former, it's private development doing this. The issue, though, that's separate and apart from whether the sewer utility is building itself out or the private development is hooking in and donating this stuff, is there is currently state law policy and Department of Health policy that equates septic systems to sewer, and so unless and until there's a failure, there's not going to be a requirement at this point from either the local or the state-level Department of Health saying, "We agree with this idea that everything should be sewered, period." There's going to be the argument, both at the legislative political advocacy side, from the private side, but also that the agencies are going to say, "These septic systems work, they've been shown to be effective, and they're lasting longer and longer, and we're not going to require, from our perspective, this hookup." And so there's going to be, even if this process were to be successful at PCRC, there's still going to be that larger discussion about whether the Departments of Health would agree and go along with this idea of forcing operating septic systems to hook into sewer.
So just as, as additional information, the county sewer utility is currently including in its capital plan sewer line expansions as an economic development tool. That is a change of policy that's fairly drastic. The prioritization of what and where those sewer extensions would entail is still undeveloped, but the change to allocate some resources to actually building sewer lines, which the county hasn't done since about 1978 or something, when it extended out here in Lakewood, I think there was one in Parkland a little later, maybe, but they really haven't built any. So that's going to be a new priority, and there might even be some innovative ways that they can find a little more cash flow to bond. So I think this would be helpful as encouragement to county council members. Mr. Branstadter.
Well, as I look at it, at the three policies, the one that is clearest to me, that makes good sense, is number two, because it's something that's needed and it's something that could benefit all the cities and towns in Pierce County, to be able to go to that, and that seems an appropriate action for the Pierce County Regional Council to take. I kind of agree with the deputy mayor on the last one, that it's, you know, this would definitely not be something to hold your breath on, to be able to go and do that. I guess I don't mind saying that we're not going to spend any more of our staff time on this after we send it to them and we'll ask the Pierce County Regional Council to spend their staff time on, to be able to go and do that, but until at least one of the big two decides they want to champion this through with the rest of the county, you know, I don't know. So I'm kind of neutral as to whether it's in our resolution or not, because I can temper the regulations. I am very concerned about the first policy recommendation. Not that I wouldn't like the Pierce County Utility to do this, but I don't like the precedent of going to the Pierce County Regional Council and having them specifically target out one particular utility amongst a group of utilities to develop a county policy that that utility should operate differently. There are more sewer utilities in Pierce County than just the one operated by Pierce County. Tacoma has one, Sumner has one, Puyallup has one, I believe that there are a couple more. And, you know, this is not a good precedent to have, I mean, we would not want the Pierce County Regional Council to adopt a policy that says, "This is how you have to..." Lakewood, your stormwater utility needs to operate differently than it is, and single one out. I think this is an appropriate issue for us to communicate with Pierce County and the Pierce County Council to do that, but I wouldn't want to imply to the Pierce County Regional Council that they somehow have, can look at utilities individually. I mean, if they want to have a policy about all sewer utilities that deal with things, that's, so, one thing, but I don't necessarily think that I'm comfortable with them being able to reach out and handpick individual utilities and say, "We have a policy that applies to you." And so, to be honest, when, after we get a motion on this, I'm going to move to delete policy one from the resolution.
Yeah, I think it is a little different in that, I think what it points out is that county governments were never meant to, as developed prior to statehood, were never meant to provide municipal services to urbanized areas. That wasn't the way county governments were set up, so they have a rather hodgepodge of utility responsibilities, from inheriting failed small-town water systems to default sewer systems because there's no municipality to pick that utility up, to, so, that interfaces with the Pierce County Regional Council in a different way than the cities interface with the Pierce County Regional Council. And then there's the case of Lakewood, if I were to offer an amendment to this, I would include the cities where Pierce County provides sewer utility, because it's in the same situation as unincorporated Pierce County, where we would like to see the county further sewer Woodbrook, and University Place would like to see their dead zone between them and the city of Tacoma where they need, they have some failing septic systems, sewered, but doesn't really have the money to do it. Mr. Whalen.
Here, real quick, how do you envision this playing out at the GMCC level? Or would it be that committee that would chew on this to help develop policy directives?
More than likely, what would happen is this, the intention as proposed in the resolution for you this evening is, this gets forwarded for the informational purposes to the Pierce County Council, it gets sent to the clerk of the PCRC. PCRC takes it up to say yes or no to any of these policies, do they want to proceed and include it in the work plan? Come next February, if they do so, yes, they would probably send all of them to the GMCC for discussion and recommendation back up to PCRC, so a year from now, it may come back with GMCC recommendations.
Which could be up or down.
Any further questions? Not an entertaining motion, can still have further discussion. Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been moved by Ms. Barth, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we adopt resolution number 2018-11. Further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the section one of the resolution to delete the words sewer capacity, comma, connection and expansion, semicolon. the words sewer capacity, comma, connection and expansion, semicolon, and to delete any portions of Exhibit A that relate to sewer capacity, connection and expansion.
There's a second on the amendment. There's a second on the amendment. Hearing none, the amendment dies. Now move to the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is no unfinished business.
Is there any new business? Reports by the city manager, Ms. Kraus?
The first item I have for the city manager report is an update, which I'd like to call up CDBG and Housing Division Manager Jeff Gumm to provide that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be before you again to present you another update. I believe the last time I was here was about March, going through this, so I'll give you a little bit of update since then. So, the, the current status of the program is, we're at fourteen projects completed this year. Five of those were completed by the owner, nine were completed by the city. We have fourteen projects that are either under an abatement order or a complaint. Six of those are at complaint notice, which is kind of the starting process, and eight of those are at the abatement order, which is near the end of the process. Of those, ones that we're working on, six are being repaired by the owner. So, we're actually starting to get some decent compliance from owner occupied properties or owner owned to properties. We've also got ten, I'm sorry, nine monitoring and pending properties, actually ten, because there was another one that was added very recently. So, I've, I've got a, a smaller workload of properties that's, that's ongoing, but there's still a few more coming through the pipeline. This map kind of shows you where the city has worked in the most recent year. So, all of the blue dots are completed this year. There's a fairly strong cluster of them in the Tillicum and Woodbrook neighborhoods. And then there's a few other sparsely kind of scattered here and there. Monitoring and pending, they're kind of all over the city right now. We have two nuisance abatements. I have been working on those for probably the better part of four or five months. We've cleaned up two of those. I have one additional phase that we have to finish on one of those properties. And both of those are the pink dots on 108th Street. And then all of the red dots are ones that we're getting close to working on demolition or actually getting the owners to complete. So, the fund status, where we are to date, we have a current fund balance. There's two funds, the 105 and the 191. Between the two funds, there's about $390,000 in cash available for dangerous buildings. We have liens outstanding of about $260,000. Expenditures year-to-date, we're actually up a little bit this year compared to last year. We've got $190,000 roughly in work that we've done and we've received about $90,000 back. So, a little bit of outflow this year. Here's the schedule of outstanding abatement liens and the schedule that I anticipate getting repaid on those. There's a, a number of liens outstanding, 396,000 combined. This year, looking at just about another $61,000 coming in. So, 150 or so is what I anticipate this year to receive in revenue for the city. Next year, about 121,000, 103, and so forth, probably from that, that point on. There's a fairly consistent schedule of abatements that we've had over the last three years. So, it's looking to be 100 to 130,000 kind of on an annual basis coming back. This is what we have completed since March. I didn't include any of the earlier ones. This is 15005 Grant Avenue, a property owned by Metropolitan Development Council. It, it had burned with squatters in the property. Metropolitan Development Council actually demolished this themselves. Took a little bit of time. They had to get the funds in place, but they did demolish that. Another dangerous property, 8209 Maple Street, common theme here, squatters. This property burned on three separate occasions. Took a little bit of time. The, the bank wanted to, I don't know if they wanted to lengthen this process or what, but they unfortunately lengthened the process. We had to finally have the bank out there and they realized when they saw their property that it really was a full loss. And this, this building doesn't quite, or picture doesn't quite do it justice. The entire structure inside, first floor, second floor, were pretty much charred. So, where it really wasn't worth the value of the building. Another property, unfortunately, those aren't the greatest pictures, 9616 Gravely Lake Drive. It's a commercial property. It's, it's completed from an exterior perspective. So, the owner came in and fixed the columns that were failing, fixed the roof that was failing, a lot of the soffit material, some electrical issues, egress issues from the exterior of the building. A lot of, a lot of work was put into it. He has yet to address, and we have yet to address with him, the interior components. So, this has a, a second phase that's yet to follow. 15302 Union Avenue, I'm sure that some of you have seen this property in your passings in the Tillicum neighborhood. This was a two-story commercial building. I had all kinds of issues with this building. It's, it was vacant, I believe, for about seven or eight years, somewhere in that ballpark, maybe even more than that. Had degraded, had fallen into a state of disrepair. The owner really didn't have any plans to redo this, at least anything that was feasible. So, ultimately, we ended up tearing this building down. And this was actually the, the last building that I have torn down, the most recent building I've torn down, I should put it that way. So, the neighbors in the neighborhood, I, I got more calls from the, the coffee house behind that and the neighbors kind of across the road. They were ecstatic that this thing came down. So, positive feedback on this one. Another property, there's two of them that we've worked on in the Wood, Woodbrook neighborhood, 7305 146. This is kind of a elongated piece of property. It had a single-family house, which you can see in this picture on the front. And it had four manufactured homes in the back. So, we removed the single-family house. This one, again, had squatters in it for a number of years. Had pretty much trashed the inside of the building. The building itself was a $45,000 piece of property. By the time the repairs were done, it would have been two or three times that. So, they, we tore that building down. The backside of the property, the owner addressed. So, you can kind of see in that picture, there was, there's three pictures, or three manufactured homes. There's one that you can't quite see in the back a little bit. But the owner did come in and remove all of these units. Took a little while to get compliance, but now it's a vacant site completely. The very next-door property to that, 7209 146th, another one of the kind of eyesores that we've had in the Woodbrook neighborhood. There was three houses on this property. So, there's two that you can see in that picture. And one you can kind of see in the left on that side. There was, again, each of these structures had multiple fires. I believe one of them had three fires. The one on the left had three fires. The one on the right on that side, slide had one fire. And then the one on the left on this slide had two fires that pretty much destroyed all of those units. So, those, again, were a very large problem for the police, with squatters in and out of those. Nice to get rid of those properties. The owner of those properties actually worked with us to give us access to the property. We were able to do it faster than, she was able to do it with the tasks that she has on her plate at this point in time for some other development projects. So, we will be getting reimbursed for those fairly soon. Active abatements, where we are now. 10101 Hemlock, you can kind of see a before and in the, in the process of. This was a, a dangerous structure that had sat vacant for, again, a number of, of years. Again, there were squatters into this property, all kinds of legal improvements. That's kind of what it looks like now. It's a, an individual who's developing it into a rather nice, single-family One in the Tillicum neighborhood, it was a garage. This was an accident, I believe. The individual crashed into two garages. This was the second of the two. This one was recently repaired, has not finished with the permit process. There's some engineering and some bolting that has to be finalized. But once that's done, the, the structure will meet building code and no longer be dangerous. Property that's been on the list for a while, the owner is doing this project. I, I don't have a more recent picture of this. This was a, a single-family house on the, on the side that's attached to a manufactured home. He did detach these structures. The single-family house, he pretty much tore all of the issues off of that, reframed it, put new trusses on it. I was out there on Thursday, and he's almost done with the single-family house now. It's a, basically a one-man show. It's the owner and he's rebuilding both of these himself. So, he's got the single-family house where it will probably pass final inspection within the next two weeks. And then he's going to jump on to the manufactured home and, and finish those issues as well. So, we're working with him on this one. He's, he's eliminated the dangerous conditions on it. He just hasn't finished the project. So, we're still watching to make sure he finishes his project. 3411 90th Street, this was a single-family house. It was converted into multiple units. I believe there was five families living in there at one point in time. This has since had permits issued for it. It's being converted back to a single-family house. Another issue with this property is the, the lots next door, or at least the, the large lot, was converted or is being converted into a commercial use. So, he's applying for a boundary line adjustment. He's going to have two different parcels. One of them will actually be a commercial yard rather than a single-family use, and then this will be a single-family use. What you can't see in the picture are all of his construction supplies and storage of bricks and materials and lumber and garbage and debris. I mean, he's, it's, it's a contractor yard for all intents and purposes that was illegally converted. So, he's in the process of correcting those issues. 911 New Grove, another house. This was actually owner occupied before we got to this point. The owner passed away, had done zero repairs for a number of years. And the back of the house literally just about fell off of this building. So, the, the new owner has gone in and, and done some preliminary work to kind of shore this up and has permits to fix it. It is in the process of doing so. Seattle Avenue 5118, this is another property that the owner is working to demolish. He's, there was a, a single-family, or there is a single-family house to the right of what you're looking at in the picture. There was a, a number of illegal structures, outbuildings and so forth. He removed all of those structures and is working in the process of getting this asbestos survey, getting it set up for demolition permit. And this will be gone this year as well. One that we issued a permit for, I believe, last Wednesday or Thursday, was a single-family house. This is in the Woodbrook neighborhood at the end of 146th. Was involved in a fire, I believe, nine months ago, somewhere about a year ago. The owner didn't have the funds to demolish it at that point in time. So, we have, we moved for a demolition order. They have since come in for demolition permit and are working to, to remove this. There's, there's really only a, a concrete foundation and, and a little bit of debris left. So, it's not like it's a, a very large project. They should be able to complete that relatively quickly. And then, there's a, a series of Lake Grove and 99th Street properties. I believe some of you are aware of this property. Unfortunately, this property has probably been the biggest nuisance property in the city of Lakewood. This is the one next to it, 5908 Lake Grove. Good news is, legal has done the notification process to the owners. They've been served. This one on Friday, legal is in court for a warrant hearing, and this one will be coming down very shortly thereafter.
How shortly thereafter?
Probably within three weeks. Two to three weeks. I mean, it's going to depend on a contractor's demolition schedule, because I don't know how far they are out right now. But it's, once we have the warrant in hand, we're ready to demolish it. I have, I've already done the, the bidding process. So, it's just a matter of crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. The, the property next door, if any of you need a couch or any furniture, there's ample furniture out there. You could probably find a nice one to go in your garage.
Feel my blood pressure?
This one as well, we're, we're working on the notification process and, and legal's looking within, I believe, I don't know exactly the dates, within the next couple of weeks. This one will be moving to warrant process and we'll be following through with this one to tear it down as well. Another property that people continue to dump on, have continued to cause all kinds of issues with squatters.
Mr. Whalen?
Yeah, it's probably one of my couches there. Just focusing on these, Jeff, a little bit. And part of it, it would be great at some point maybe to re-educate us periodically with a primer on the legal steps and the timeline we have to go through on process. Because I probably don't have, in my, my humble, sanguine self, an appreciation for the process that you guys have to go through. But, this one has been hanging around for a hell of a long time. Why has it taken us so dang long to get this one done? I mean, I can remember a year ago, it was almost, didn't have the same couches, Ms. Walker.
Deputy Mayor-
Perhaps these go to the legal lounge up on the second floor.
Right. Deputy Mayor Whalen and members of the council, one of the things that we have come to appreciate is that things were not coming to legal at the outset. We would attend the CSRT meeting and everyone would sit around the table. And in your worst bureaucratic nightmare, we would talk about any number of things and not necessarily move forward at the very beginning and say, this is the one. Or if this week, this was the one, two weeks later, a different one was the one. And so, when you see in your paragraph in your packet about how legal and community development have come together to coordinate on this, it's never been as streamlined as it is now. And I think there's a new appreciation for why you don't wait until it's broken to come to legal. I understand the resistance of wanting to deal with the lawyers. The lawyers always make everything take longer. But when you wait to go to legal until it's truly, truly broken and people are really upset, then you start the legal process at that point instead of starting it at the very beginning when you first realize that you might need to go there. We've decided, instead of doing it that way from this day forward, what we're doing is, we're letting legal know at the outset. And if we have a bunch of paperwork ready to go that we don't need, nobody complains about that.
Right.
People complain when we have to get all that ready to go. And in some cases, the notification, we can't get people served. Because the kind of people that let properties get to this point are the kind of people that are hard to serve. That shouldn't come as a surprise.
Fully served by publication if needed, right?
Exactly. And that's what we had to do with this one. And at the point when we were starting publication, as I said, it was already well-broken. And so, that will not be happening going forward.
On this one?
Yes.
Because we had a relationship with the lender who we were told is foreclosing, who likely had to have notices for the owner to send the foreclosure notices, which we would follow up for possible service, what was the communication link with the foreclosing lender?
Letting both Jeff and I can-
I, I know that there were a lot of conversations.
I had a call with Dimitri Vizi.
Me too.
Yeah. And, you know, he wants these down as much as anyone, even though he is a foreclosing lender, still doesn't have title. So, you know, one wonders if you got consent and waiver from the foreclosing lender, how much risk do you have with the owner?
We would need all property owners in interest, so.
But how much risk is there, really? If you went down and mowed it down? I mean, we do, we have more risk being on Metro Swat than we would tearing down a piece of crap that's worth 10 bucks.
I, I hear you. And at the same time, that owner, that lender, Dimitri, and I can't remember the last name.
Vizi.
Vizi.
His father used to own the town center.
Yeah, he does, he has have a certain amount of authority now, since Nation Star has been legislatively corrected. So, i-if, you know, you want to get into the details here, Nation Star case said that people, lenders foreclosing couldn't enter the property until the property was fully foreclosed.
Absolutely.
So, that, that had unintended consequences of a lot of zombie properties. So, they fixed that. And now, these property owners with partial ownership of the property can now go on to the property, secure it, otherwise maintain or preserve it. And I, I think he understands what he has to do. Unfortunately, it's a little like whack-a-mole for him as well. The minute he comes in and spends a lot of time securing or otherwise preserving the property, transients, squatters come in. How many calls for service have we had there?
Lots.
It's ridiculous.
130.
130. I mean, and, and, you know, you can't always be there 24/7 acting as security agents for one property owner. And that's, that's the reality. So, you know, I think, I'm sorry.
Let me ask you this, though. I mean, do we not have some right duty slash obligation if we can't get anyone to respond to go in and clean up the trash at least? I mean, yes, we're entering quote-unquote the property, but we're not impacting the structure. But we alleviate this-
And I'll, I, I mean, you, you bear risks. There, there is no no here.
But we always have risk. We have to weigh them.
And I'll tell you, there are three statutes on abatements.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, it's, it's boring. It's not interesting. But- But there are three statutes and they have different process associated with each one. I can tell you this, though, under all of them, even under the lower form of just cleaning up trash under seven forty-eight, you still need to get a warrant before you go on to somebody's property. That's the Constitution. That's Fourth Amendment right.
Don't we have a right for administrative warrants, though?
Okay. And we could get an emergency administrative warrant if we wanted to. We could get an emergency inspection warrant if we wanted to. We would have to show there is an emergency. We might be able to, but we're so close to getting an actual warrant to do the demolition here. I've done the, you've gotta serve the people first and then you gotta do it by publication. Again, I know it's not a fun answer here, but if it were your property and you had a Fourth Amendment right, you would wanna make sure the process was followed. And in all three statutes, we have to give that notice before we enter the property. And you're right, Mr., well, Dimitri, we've talked enough. I think I can hold by his first name. You know, he's frustrated too, but he couldn't get service. That's the reason his foreclosure, he told us he'd be done with the foreclosure in June. That's why we waited also to file on this. Because he kept saying, "I'm gonna foreclose. My contractor can do it cheaper than you guys." So, to some degree, I mean, the department gives people a little bit of wiggle room, but this has been a problem for years. When it got to Legal, it's been a problem for a couple of weeks.
Again, going back to the education piece, and I appreciate where you're coming from. I do. And we're not, I'm not griping so much at you. I'm griping with you.
Okay.
Because this has been a source of huge frustration for me.
I got it.
Because of my wife working next door, my friends own the business next door, you know, it's a mess.
It is a mess.
And it attracts a bunch of idiots who go and take dumps on their front door and then wipe it on the door jamb and the window frames.
I know.
It's just unacceptable. But a primer on the educational as to process, as you know it now, would be helpful. So, we understand where you're coming from.
So, okay, and really briefly, because I can tell you, we spend a lot of time issuing infractions.
Right.
Saying, "Clean up your property, clean up your property, clean up your property." Take an average kindergartner, they know to pick up after themselves. Why do we spend that much time issuing infractions to adults who oughta know? Clean up your property. So, you know, you can give people a little bit of room, but years, thinking not. The second step in the process is an administrative complaint and order. That's the second major step. That's where Jeff, the building official, usually come in. We post it, we give notice, we say, "We're fed up, man. This is happening now. Come to a hearing, we'll discuss it." How many times do they come?
So...
One time, okay.
Yeah, we...
One last time.
We can't go...
Then we get to court. That's the third part.
We can't go back, we can't go forward. So, when this happens again, is there some change we can make to, or modification of the municipal code, under whatever jurisdiction, police powers we can think of, to expedite an emergency administrative process on health and safety to clean up things like this which are a very obvious health and safety issue? So that we can say, "This is terrible. We need an emergency order. We have a process, public works or contract or whatever, and go in and haul the crap off."
Mr. Mayor, there's no need for a code change. Our record to date on getting such an emergency order is one day, if it comes to Legal. And we've got the facts. We can absolutely do this. The problem is in the overall process. We need to stop giving chances.
Well, the other thing is resources. And one of the things that some of us have talked about is we have a budget coming up.
Yep.
This is an effective, popular program. And I think there's strong council sentiment that we wanna spend more money if we can do more things.
And Mr. Bueller, I have to discuss that exact issue. And one of the discussions we had, and again, going back to general bureaucracy, is all ships rise with the tide, so everybody gets bodies. Legal does not need bodies for this. It is distinctly possible that community development or code enforcement needs bodies. We can keep up with it. It is not a matter of being overwhelmed by these or anything else. It is a matter of getting in sync with each other and not giving the opportunities. And I'll tell you what I think has happened. In the beginning, we caught low-hanging fruit. And we were able to persuade people to get properties cleaned up. And these guys really got a lot done on limited resources that didn't take us to that place. We're now at a different level because the low-hanging fruit is gone and we're actually running into, I'm sorry, but occasionally competent counsel on the other side. And that makes a big difference. And it is more important now than it has been in the past that we get it all right. Legal does not need the resources. I do think code enforcement, building inspection, those sorts of things that Mr. Bueller will get into would benefit the program.
And we would appreciate a plan, options, I would say, like option A and option B for budget consideration so that we can weigh...
And I think, when I was nodding yes, I think Jeff and I have particularly talked about getting more into a groove of how many times do you give somebody a chance? And making it more uniform and predictable in that regard as well. And like Heidi was saying here, Planet Lending, Home Lending, that was, I don't know, the fire happened within twenty-four hours. Judge Johnson gave us an emergency warrant of abatement. And that was with a representative attorney who really didn't want that property demolished. But the reason he didn't, he said it was for insurance purposes.
When that happens, it knocks Jeff off his horse on what he's doing otherwise. And we're so minimally manned on this.
This is true. This is true. I think then the fire goes over that way. That's right.
And so, we need, for example, one thing I haven't seen here, maybe it's the next slide, is...
Wait, there's more.
Forty-seventh Avenue Southwest, right next to the park. Now, yeah, we're gonna buy it, we'd rather have them fix it up, but it's a lot easier to buy it if you're cleaning it up and leaning on them.
Well, I don't know if I wanna get into all of that. I wanna process, I wanna do the process. I don't wanna lean on anybody. I'd like to go back to the kindergarten example.
They have a greater density of junk there and who knows how many people are living there at the same time. It's just piling up. Every time you go by, it's higher. Now, there's no free space on the ground. And it's right next to a park we've tried to develop that is, and it's gonna start spilling over the fence any moment.
Yeah, that one, it's not necessarily like on my list. That was one that I think Parks was working to acquire. So, there wasn't, it wasn't ever, code enforcement didn't really follow up with that property. And I don't believe, because Parks was trying to acquire that. So, it's not on my list. It could be on my list, but it's not.
Mr. Polke.
A couple of questions for Eileen. The first question for Eileen. You mentioned the legal terminology, but we were told the legislature had made this change so that when something was in the process of foreclosure, we would be able to do what we needed to do, or the lender would be able to do what, and so, we cheered that some few months ago.
Right.
In this case, it's, now you're saying it doesn't really work.
I wouldn't say it doesn't work. I'd say, well, you know what's interesting here is, one, I'm not sure all the lenders understand the law. I'm not sure Dimitri really understood the law and what his authority was in order to maintain and preserve his property. The second part is, they kinda like it when the city does it for them. As he said, he really didn't wanna drive south and take care of this property. I mean, he just said it out loud. So, and, you know, you can appreciate that. When you can hire out maybe the city to do it for free, that's better, right? The second point is, just today, it's Lieutenant Unfred, I'm still new enough that I have to ask. Yeah, he contacted me because a lender had contacted him about a particular property. Then Bill Matthews went out to the property to inspect it. He said, "Actually, it doesn't rise to the level of a nuisance property. It's actually in pretty good shape. It's a brick house with, and it's well-secured." So, it's interesting that the mortgage lenders are now really jumping on top of this. So, it may be just a function of a learning curve at this point. They don't have the information. We are also learning. But we have to give that notice to the lenders saying, "We've declared your property to be a nuisance property. We're doing that," I think.
They have a statutory timeline to fix it as well.
Right, yeah.
So, then, my next question on the fifty-nine, the now infamous fifty-nine-twelve property.
Infamous, yeah.
If I'm a citizen, I'm looking at this picture and I'm saying, "I see a dumpster." So, if someone brought a dumpster on site, who was that that brought the dumpster on site and why isn't it being used?
Dimitri. That was, the dumpster was originally brought on by Dimitri Vizi when he had his contractor secure the property and eliminate some of the really bad stuff on it. The chimney was about ready to fall in. There were some other issues on the back. The garage was, had some issues from fire damage and electrical problems and all kinds of things. So, he brought in that dumpster. It went away one time with the garage and some of the other debris and then brought it back. I believe that company has since gone out of business. That dumpster is completely full of garbage and it's actually gonna be part of the dump that we haul off in the next load. So, it's unfortunate. But yeah, it was brought in by the bank and then they left it at that point.
Okay. I mean...
Mr. Whalen.
Since this is our favorite slide, I think I sent it with a little caption.
No doubt.
Yeah. So, someone had mentioned to me, Jeff, I don't know if it was you or someone else, that we do levy fines administratively on the owner slash lender? Or is it on the owner until it's cleaned up?
Well, you know, because the lender has an ownership interest, we can levy those fines against them as well. To encourage that person, especially if they have the ability like they do at this time.
So, I'd like to know how and how much we're fining these people. And this goes to the no-good-deed-go-simpunished bucket, which means no latitude. If we are properly following the process to fine these idiots, I'd say, "Fine the hell out of them." And if it's a super priority lien on this property, like it would be our expenses to tear it down had we gone through and when we go through the process to do that, we stick to our guns. Because it's the only way these people are gonna learn. So, I wanna know where we are on the fining process with regard to these Lake Grove properties. And just remind me of what priority the fine gets vis-à-vis the cleanup costs when Jeff goes through the process finally to remove, scrape and abate a house.
I don't know the number of fines that were issued for this property. I know there was multiple fines issued, but it was, they were issued when the previous owner owned the property. So...
Don't we have a daily fine that we do if they don't clean up? We give them a citation, they don't do it?
Yes.
I hope it comes to a million bucks soon. You know, obviously, that's facetious. But, I mean, I want it to be painful enough on this lender.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, the citations is different than an abatement. I mean...
I get that. That's why I wanna know about how the citation fines are treated in terms of the collectability, whether they get that super priority process or not and how do we typically do it?
Those are handled, yeah, those are handled differently. Because that's done under municipal court. Those are municipal courts and they chase down those funds. If they can't collect them, then they send them to a collection agency. So, that's separate and apart from the abatement process. And the way we handle that in municipal court is when we get into court, and I think those are one time a month, the first Wednesday of every month, that's when we assess, "All right, how much have you done to actually improve the conditions on the property? If they've made some improvement, we can recommend to the judge, you know, you can reduce the fine. Or if they've done nothing, then not only don't reduce it, increase the fine." It is our only stick. I mean, and that's what we're trying to strike the right balance between carrot and stick here.
So, the, so the fine against the owner, in most cases, will be ineffective because it could be a lien behind the lender who isn't gonna get their money back.
Well...
Now, a fine against the lender, I'm a little more concerned about. I'm concerned about walking onto the, somebody's Fourth Amendment rights, walking onto the property and taking garbage away. But the Fourth Amendment, taking a property from a lender or attempting to fine them by telling them to do something on property where they haven't gained control.
Well, and that's where this legislative fix changes everything. Because as of June, whatever it was, eighth or something, anyway, of this year, the lender now has an opportunity, which, by the way, has, when you have rights, you have responsibilities, right? So, they have the right to go on to the property to secure and preserve the property. Because you have that right now, you also have that responsibility. That's my argument.
Provided it's in their lending documents.
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't it that be provided it's in their lending documents?
I don't know about the lending documents, but I'm saying, yeah, it creates a duty.
There's a statute that creates a right that...
There's a right of entry and a duty of trust.
But most of the, you know, usually the deed of trust would have, if it's a standard deed of trust...
Some kind of right of entry. You're right, yeah.
They say you can do X, Y, and Z. The court case screwed that up and said, even though you can actually have that right, you don't...
Nation Star kinda turned that on its head, yeah.
You don't have that right. So, you know, I'd be concerned that we have some sort of process that, with a bright mind for the lenders, that, you know, with...
And we do. I mean, we're giving them notice and an opportunity to do the right thing. We're asking them to do the right thing. If they don't, then we issue fines and give them an incentive to do the right thing.
I'm asking, how do we determine that they can?
I'm sorry?
How do we determine that they have, they have the, they have the legal right to do that?
Because of that, yeah, because of the legislative change to the Nation Star case.
We just assume that they have good lending documents.
Well, I'm pretty clear, they have the right and the responsibility.
Under the Nation Star, they have to provide you with a copy of the, I believe, when you go in through foreclosure, you have to file a notice of foreclosure, whatever. So, they have to provide us with that. They have to provide us with proof that they actually have legal right to the building. So, part of Nation Star addresses that, they have to provide that to us. So, we would know that they own it and how to...
And the fix, the legislative fix also includes that. So, we would get that information. We would understand what their rights and responsibilities are. Then we would issue the notice, or actually, we issued the notice first. And then, at that point, they either pony up and do the right thing, or they get fined, or, and in this case, again, we're gonna move on there faster than we could get any other kind of warrant. And, you know, the other, I think you've been working it out with the utilities, but that can be a time delay as well. You know, on the emergency warrant, we got the emergency warrant and then Sound Energy kept us waiting for...
Wouldn't shut off.
Yeah, they wouldn't shut off the energy or the electrical supply. So, you can't do a demolition without that being shut off and that took two weeks.
Is that a timing issue or is that just kind of their right hand not working with their left?
I think Jeff's finally got to the correct people. And again, I mean, we can make the utility companies look stupid so that they move a little faster.
Well, I mean, it's a good thing for us to know because, for example, the utility lobby guy reached, our public affairs guy reached out to me to have coffee. And this could be an issue. I could say, "You know, by the way..."
By the way.
"...this is something you can help us with."
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, I mean, that took about two and a half weeks to get them to disconnect the utilities. What was interesting is, I called the utilities and I told them as well as that our contractor, "We have an emergency abatement, we have an emergency warrant, this thing needs to come down." So, they said, "Great, you're on our emergency schedule." I wait four days, five days, nothing. So, I called them and I said, "Hey, what's going on with our emergency schedule? I thought you guys were gonna get that?" And they said, "Yeah, you're on it." And I said, "Well, where are we?" And he said, "You got about another week and a half." I'm like, "That's not, that's not an emergency." So, I had to call the crew that actually does the scheduling and told them where that was. And he said, "Yeah, I drove by the site to look at it. Clearly, it's an emergency, I'll move it up." So, I know the inside people now to kind of move our schedules up. But apparently, power companies think about two weeks is an emergency process, so that doesn't worry.
Maybe I'll talk to them about that.
Do we have any leverage under our franchise agreements?
That's a great question.
We can certainly look at those and not only, uh, look at the current language, but we can look at when they're coming up, um, if there's a need for different language.
So again, I appreciate this and, and if you could, I don't want to add to your workflow, but I think it would be helpful for me, maybe the others, if we can just have a little pictogram about the process and maybe a site to the code or whatever. And there's something because that way we're not yammering all the time. We can say, "Oh yeah, I understand. We recall."
Here we are in this stage. Okay.
That would be helpful to me.
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit on the deputy mayor's inquiries. Over the past several years, and we have gotten a variety of, uh, briefings on, on the processes and, and the things that go on. And it, it seemed that although in the code, the municipal code, we have the provisions of where, how the abatement, we have nuisances and that and things can be abated. And we have a process that moves through to, that involves legal things and where if the city incurs expenses in abating a property, we can go through a lien process to get that back. And then we have the other thing that says that if you are the perpetrator of, of a continuing nuisance, uh, that there are, there is a, a citation fine structure that is X amount of dollars a day to be able to do that. And that's what the, the code doesn't say either or. The code says you can do both. But my understanding in most of the time of the briefings that we've gotten from staff is as a matter of procedure, we usually make an either or type decision that, you know, we don't proceed with both concurrently. If a person gives us some lip service that they're going to be cooperative with us, we stop issuing the citations because it requires someone to physically go there every day and be able to go and do that. And on the other side of that, in some of the briefings that we've gotten from the court and from the finance department, these particular fines, even when they're assessed, are the ones that typically either aren't paid, they either go to collections or at some point in time show up as being written off in something of where we're dealing with, with, with the budget. And so when we, and, and I, I got the impression that part of the reason why we don't follow through aggressively with both concurrently was a manpower issue. Because it takes someone there to go and issue all these citations every day and we, we do do them for a junk car parked in the right of way and things like that, that, that will get things to where we can do that thing up. So, uh, you know, I do think that in the, in the budget process coming up, that looking to get some resources in place to be able to actively pursue both solutions and good intentions stated are, are nice, but results are better.
So you have more to present?
I can go through it fairly quickly.
I will tell you, I will tell you what was interesting though, when, um, um, Jeff shared the shared drive abatements and it is in your shared drive. If you ever want to see his wonderful matrix, he's very organized. He, he, his filing cabinet is, is, is a thing of beauty. But looking at the years past and how many abatements, what did you say? It was about twenty?
Fifteen to sixteen, seventeen and it was an average.
Was an average every, this year we're up to thirty and we added ten.
We will do twenty-nine.
I mean, well, and it's only August. So we're up ten with, I mean, with, and, and oddly enough, we have ten judicial abatements. So I think we're doing pretty well, which is not to say that they don't need more code enforcement help there because I think then we could get more of them into the system. And we're getting more organized, more systematized in, in the legal department. When they come through that we can more push a button than have to relearn it.
Unfortunately, we don't have an inventory shortage.
Okay. Well, there you go.
But as you conclude this, going back to the mayor's point and maybe Mr. Buer is sitting there. I mean, just think through as you end tonight and you guys go back and contemplate and you come up with a budget recommendation. If we were to throw, pick a number, three hundred, four hundred thousand, I don't care what it takes to double it, whatever it takes to get it done. Think about what, and we're trying to help you, help all of us. Uh, what, what could that accomplish? You know, I'd like to know, you know, because, because I think we're of a mind, we want to put some money at this and hit it hard and help you out.
You know, the, the three, the, the three things I think I get the most feedback on are, gee, it's, it's, you really inconvenience me that you tore up the roads, but I really like that the roads are torn up because something's happening. Oh gee, you've done wonders with Fort, Fort Silicon Park. Uh, look at how that's changed since the city and piecemeal, you tore that crap down in my neighborhood. That's, that's great. Now we've created some expectations as some of us were talking about earlier, uh, tonight, that people think that they can call the city and get some help and we're, I think we're understaffed to help them at the level of service they expect. So, Mr. Bulkey.
And I'll, and I agree with, with the mayor said and so I'll just dovetail on that. I, first of all, the one in Silicon has been, or Tilicum, excuse me, has been sitting there a long, long time. And I think the whole neighborhood, I know some people who lived down on the lake and they were like, wow, that thing got knocked down. And they were just so pleased. And, and I do, I do agree with the mayor. I think there's an expectation game and actually I think it's a positive thing. I think that some of the items that we're seeing, um, that we're getting on now on Nixon, that have just, out of the blue, kind of just arrived now, are an indication that, you know, people pay good money for their homes and, and they're like looking down the streets saying, "What's this person doing?" So actually I look at it as a positive that we've actually get now, people are really getting to the act, really want some changes. And I think we need to embrace that. Um, so it, it's, it's a resource issue, clearly, you know, there's, and I guess I'm naive that I thought by now, all the ones that were bad would be knocked down or darn close to it and we'd be down to just a few a year, but it actually seems to almost be speeding up, which is odd to me. And, um, but it is what it is and so we're, we're going to have to deal with it. But I, but I actually, I, I, I actually think we should just embrace it and say, people are complaining more because people are actually seeing these things. They're starting to look like eyes or as the city manager says the same thing about streets. He goes, "Well, the more streets we fix, the other ones look worse," right? They didn't, they're not any different than they were six months ago, but they're worse in retrospect, you know, they got that. So, you know, it's an expectations game.
Yeah, I, I think you hit it on the head. I mean, it's what I have noticed from CSRT in the, in the years that I worked with them. I mean, when we started the abatement or when I started the abatement process and we as a team were going, there was a number of projects that we were working, but there wasn't necessarily as much citizen input. So it was kind of code enforcement's out looking at properties and we're generating the ones that need to get done. Um, at this point in time, it's probably fifty-fifty, maybe even more with citizen input. So the code enforcement has actually seen, like you say, the expectation, "Hey, you know what? You dealt with my neighbor's house and it looked just like this. Why aren't we dealing with this one?" So we're getting a lot of that, um, and a lot of that is, is a positive thing. And I, I think, yeah, if, if we can continue to push that and keep that moving, then obviously it's going to benefit everyone. Uh, I can go through these last ones really, really quickly.
I took my blood pressure medication, so go ahead.
You've, most of these are unfortunately, they're all going to be on the same Lake Grove. Lake Grove Street is the theme. Um, the good thing is, is the next five, six slides that I'll show you, uh, we had an abatement hearing on today. The owners are dealing with all of these properties. So we're going to go from fourteen projects done in about two and a half weeks to twenty projects done. So the owner, this one is one that burned down, um, Ninety-Ninth Street, which is, uh, just south of Lake Grove. It abuts the property. Um, it had a failing garage, burned down, squatter activity. Another adjacent property, six oh two three ninety-nine, same sort of deal, squatters in this property. It's got all kinds of building code issues. It's got a garage that's unsecured. Every time we go to this one, the squatters run out of the property and they go through the backside. We can never keep up with them, but there's always squatters. Uh, another one, six oh one nine, Ninety-Ninth Street Southwest. It, it as well has a garage that's unsecured. Uh, this one, I'm sure you've seen it and it's unfortunately been, uh, graffiti to probably over the last six months, more than I've ever seen. And the last one is a garage on sixty-one oh two Lake Grove. So all of these properties are contiguous. The owner has already worked on the asbestos. He's getting that finished. He's got some other things that he's doing and probably within about a week, week and a half, he'll probably be in for demo permits because he'll have all of his paperwork ready for us. So these ones are going to move fairly quickly and I believe it's being developed into, I think, sixty units of multifamily housing, three-story, two buildings. So we saw his plans today and it was actually, it was actually kind of neat. He, he's doing studios, uh, sync, studios, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedrooms. So three bedrooms is not something we see very often in multifamily, so should be a nice project. Uh, another one that's a commercial property, this, uh, is the one I'm working on now, is one twelve twenty-five Pacific Highway. This is a two-story, uh, pretty much abandoned building. It's been used to store janitorial supplies. It's had multiple uses over the years, but really no permits to do any of the work they've done. So this has got all kinds of legal additions. Uh, nuisance abatements, there's the one property that I'm working on, four one one five hundred and eight, that's still got twenty so cars on it. The owner has an attorney that we're working with and he's trying to convince him to get this project dealt with sooner than later. So they're making some progress, unfortunately a little bit slow. Um, and then if he doesn't, we will move on that one probably within the next two weeks and, and clean that property up as well.
Mr. Buer. We're just displaying some anxiousness, like you might have additional information for us.
My anxiousness has to deal with both keeping the rental housing safety program going and doing abatements. You know, this is, you know, there's a small group of people who are performing these assignments. And, and my challenge right now is to make sure that both go well.
That's the resource question we're asking you to help us with.
Right. The other thing too is I just wanted to, um, say a few things about Ms. Walker's comments. She's right. And the fact that we are all over the place doing too much and not being focused. We are trying to do a better job of focusing and have, having better coordination with legal so that we can move these along. And now, uh, I'm managing myself personally, the list. I'm asking Jeff on a regular basis where we're at and making sure that there was a proper coordination with the legal department. So I think there are efficiencies you're going to see there. I do also think that the expectation level has risen, incredibly so, which is a good thing because that means people within Lakewood are now talking about a quality neighborhood. And so I think your level of public participation will go up. But I am concerned about keeping all these balls on the air. And I can also say with some of the things we're seeing on the rental housing program right now, there are some bad apartment complexes that we're going to have to deal with here very soon. I'll speak to the city manager more about that, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Any other questions, comments?
We do appreciate it.
Well, we, this, this is the kind of reception you get for doing a good job.
I'll work on that.
But, uh, seriously, I, I, I think you, uh, can understand, uh, and appreciate the tenor of council's concerns. It's not that it's being done poorly, it's that we think you're under-resourced and we want to do more of this. And we know you can't. Uh, personally, I've been, uh, I, I've been extremely express, impressed with your work, Mr. Gum. I don't know how you keep this and all those goofy federal regulations straight in your mind. But somehow you do. Uh, and if we could clone you, I would add that FTE tomorrow on an emergency ordinance, so.
Maybe make an assistant city manager position for craft housing.
Cloning has a certain number. I bet you I could come up with it for you guys.
So, thank you. Ms. Kraus.
Item I have is the condo liability reform resolution. We were informed by the Master Builders Association of Pierce County that King and Snohomish County Master Builders Branch produced a resolution. They have been handing out to local municipalities to encourage local governments to show support for condo liability reform, intending for state legislators to take action. So the MBA of Pierce is also doing something similar. So the question to the city council is, "Are you interested?" And actually we're recommending that we support such a resolution since we're including this legislative change as part of our upcoming two thousand nineteen twenty state legislative agenda as part of the policy manual. And I see heads are shaking. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think, at, at, at a minimum, consider it as soon as possible.
Yes. So as soon as we respond back to them, it'll be, um, they'd like to get that going in the next couple of weeks. The Nisqually Tribe Council and the Lakewood City Council meeting. So we've received an email from Joe Kushman, the planning director for the Nisqually Tribe, regarding a meeting between the Nisqually Tribe and the Lakewood City Council for a meet and greet and update on current issues. He stated that the Nisqually has several new tribal members who would greatly benefit from such a meeting. He is tentatively suggesting an evening meeting hosted by the Nisqually sometime in September, October. And the tentative schedule is as follows, starting with introductions and then an update on current activities and issues, identification of follow-up items of mutual interest and closing remarks. So the city staff that are involved in this coordination and schedule are Assistant City Manager Dave Buer and Brianna Schumacher, city clerk. Some upcoming events, we have scheduled and recently canceled due to the poor air quality, the summer concert series at Fort Silicon Park featuring the Good Company Electric Swing. So our Parks Department is hoping to get that rescheduled after the, uh, Labor Day. Farmers Market, however, is still on for tomorrow. And then on the twenty-second, at six P M., the Northwest Idea Tour House. This is an opportunity to see the newest and best ideas in beauty, building renovations. The shuttle location is at Tacoma Golf and Country Club and you should have received an email appointment from Brianna for that. On August twenty-third, at ten A M., we have the two-two S B C T Change of Command Ceremony at Lancerfield. And then on August twenty-eighth, at six P M., Summer Concert Series at Fort Silicon Park featuring the Candy Shop. So that concludes my update.
So what change of command?
The.
We don't have, it's the twenty, I have at the twenty-third change of responsibility. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
That's a sort of major deal?
Yeah, Graves.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for, oh, Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, if we could look at when a date for our joint meeting with the Nisqually Tribal Council is, is finalized and, uh, and particularly if they're going to host, if someone could research and there be some sort of information provided to us about protocol and customs and, and, and things that, that, that we sort of need to know as we, as we go to their house. So.
That'll cost me a lunch, but I'll do it.
Research on the custom bill.
Well, we, at the county day job, we have, uh, a, a staff person that we hired as the tribal relations manager who is a quintult and son used to work for the Nisqually's. She's, uh, an attorney by trade, but operating primarily on behalf of, uh, planning public works in Stormwater about a quarter time with the executive's office. And so I deal with her on a regular basis and she is the expert on such things, down to details on specific tribes. So, um, I will buy her lunch and pick her brain.
And yes, council member Branstadter, we do have some information on protocols, on interactions with the Nisqually Tribe that we can provide.
Or, but there are, there are subtleties. I'll give you one. One is speech patterns differ. And while a pregnant pause in our culture may invite a response from the party you're dealing with, in tribal cultures, at least in Western Washington, that doesn't mean that the person who's speaking is finished. And so you have to be real careful about stepping on people. That's something I, I've dealt with tribal members off and on for thirty-plus years and I never had any inkling of that until she told me.
and I never had any inkling of that until she told me. Any other questions for Ms. Kraus? City council comments, Ms. Moss? Mr. Bulkey?
Just a couple, just a couple of items. First, and I won't steal Mr. Deputy Mayor Wayland's thunder on the concert in the park last Tuesday, but it was great. And afterwards, when we talked to the band members and whatnot, got some different ideas. But I think it's going to be, it's a very good venue, because actually, I think it's very large, just in the design, you're going to be able to get a lot of people in there. And the PCRC meeting, I went to that, very short meeting. The executive did speak on the subject that I talked about earlier. The other item was an action item, there was some contingency money in the last round of the traffic, or the construction dollars for transportation, and 600,000 of it went to University Place, because they were next on the list. Actually, we were on the list, but we had already funded the Gravely Lake Drive project. Although I don't know, it was SDP money, and that, what we needed was something else, so... But University Place was next on the list, and they gladly accepted it. They do very well with these things, by the way. And that's about all I got.
I just want to report on the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission both had discussions amongst themselves, held a public hearing, and they have forwarded back to us a recommendation for an ordinance regarding motor vehicle sales and rental properties, which relates to the emergency rules that we put in place. What they're coming back to us has some, they're recommending some slight modifications from the rules that we put in place, but are largely consistent with them. So I think we'll be seeing that and be able to permanently dispense with that much sooner than the six-month timeline for the emergency regulations were intended to be in place. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
It's Barth. Mr. Wayland. Just two brief comments. I did very much appreciate the overview tonight on the abatement process and program. It's near and dear to all of our hearts, so look forward to more information and success stories on that. The concert in the park was great, I thought people enjoyed it very much. I thought the venue turned out to work quite well, obviously. The siding and the sound, we'll keep working on the sound piece. This Tuesday, of course, is another concert, so I would encourage those of you who haven't had a chance to go see it, it's a great opportunity. Cancelled? I just, no, I was looking to see what I was going to say, I missed that, huh? So it's cancelled, am I right? All right, doggone it. Oh, the air quality thing, can you fix that? Can that be on the abatement schedule?
Call the Puget Sound Air Police Control Party, we pay them money everywhere.
Doggone it, I missed that, sorry about that. Well, with regard to that, then, back to the abatement thing. I am meeting with Matt Perry, he called me from PSC to just kind of have a touch base about issues. I'm not sure what is on his schedule, but if we could get Ms. Walker just a little brief overview on how the utilities might be of help to us with regard to the emergency needs, just so I'm educated enough to ask him or present to him the question, that would be great. So I'm meeting on Thursday afternoon with him, yeah. And that's it, thank you very much.
We had coffee with the mayor Tuesday, there was a presentation by the police chief, it was good. The, tomorrow, no, Wednesday, excuse me, the 22nd, conflicting with something else I'm doing, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department Auditorium at 36th and D, there will be a community meeting to learn about South Sound 911's new public safety communications building plans. So I have other avenues to be informed on that, but it changes weekly. So if anybody's interested, there's your chance. Is there anything further to come before the council? I would plan on a lengthy executive session next week when Mr. Simpson returns.
Oh, we're not doing it tonight, then?
Personnel person was gone today, and I missed the ball on getting the consolidation together on Friday. So I'll take, I'll take the hit for that. I don't know on the study session.
Hopefully lighter.
Try to keep it light, so we can, yeah. We can, so, Ms. Kraus, if you can keep our study session light next week to the extent possible. Anything further to come before the council? No adjourned.
Did you guys already get the little communiqué through Bryn out on the concert cancellation? So people know?
What was that?
The concert cancellation, is that getting out in the ether, so people know not to show up?
Yeah, Bryn should be sending it, I just took it off your calendars.
Yeah, yeah, okay.